Okay, good evening and welcome to Neighborhood Board number fourteen. Just a few administrative announcements. First of all, if you have a cellphone, please turn off your cellphone. And if you want to speak, please raise your hand, especially those on the WebEx. And the neighborhood assistant can tell me you want to say something, okay? All right. First up on the agenda, let's see, we have Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, we're here on behalf of Kukini Fire Station. And the statistics provided will represent the confirmed number of incidents in the Leleha, Puunui, Aleva, and Klima Heights neighborhoods. For the month of July, we had one brush fire, four activated fire alarms, ninety-eight medical calls, and two motor vehicle crashes. And the safety tip of the month is to ensure your smoke alarms are working and have a fire escape plan in place. This includes testing the alarms regularly, replacing batteries as needed, and practicing the escape plan with everyone in the household. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions, board members? I want to thank all of you for being here. I count five of you, right? Who's manning the station?
We gotta get back.
Anyway, any questions from WebEx? Audience? Yes, Bert. Turn up.
Bert, Bert, my question for HFP is, right now, there's a lot of focus, a lot of focus on wildfires. And while we think in these urban areas that wildfire is not of likelihood, there are many areas that are close to vegetated areas. That is, HFP participating in this wildfire assessment by adding its expertise? Or will HFP generate its own study of urban areas likely to potential for exposure to wildfires? Everyone says that, make a plan. Well, you know, if you don't see where the danger is coming, you don't know what the plan is. And if, most of these hills, there's usually one way in and one way out. So, what are, what should residents be planning for? What, what should they be looking out for? You know, what are the tips that you could share with area residents or their particular areas? You actually have to do a study. That's my question. Will you be doing it?
Good question. For our district, we don't deal with much brush fires or wildland fires. But we do have another department, say, within the Honolulu Fire Department that uses wildland fires. And it's just, you gotta have a good plan. If you have a lot of brush around your house, you know, water it down when it's on hot days, like today, it's very hot. You know, for your own safety, for your, you know, peace of mind, water your grass, wet it down. And just have a good plan. But, um, yeah, we do have another department that has wildland responsibilities.
Why do we do this? I think all of us are interested in certain what happened in Lahaina. Uh, how about next meeting? Have somebody from HFP come in, just briefly tell us what kind of plan they have in regards to, I guess, being prepared for wildfires.
Sure.
Can you do that? And if you need, you can email me and I can get, put it on the agenda. We'll make it as a presentation, how's that? And you can tell all the residents about the plan.
I can forward information and see if they're available.
Good, appreciate it. Is that okay, Bert? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Good question. All right, thank you very much, HFP. Go put out some fires. Okay, Honolulu Police Department. Are you online? Honolulu Police Department? No, okay. How about Board of Water Supply?
I'm online, hi there.
Oh, hello, all right, hi.
Hi there, sorry, yes, I couldn't make it tonight. So, so I'm Iris Oda. I report on the main breaks that happened previous month was, so there was one in your board area on July first, near fourteen hundred eleven Drive. Um, so that's the one main break. The general announcement is Water Wisdom Program. So, our Water Wisdom Program is designed to support condominiums and townhome residents, uh, and owners and property managers in reducing water usage. So, this can help lower operating costs while safeguarding our drinking water today and for generations to come. So, we have three different highlights of the program is onsite or virtual presentations, which offer practical tips to reduce water usage. They have water audits for commercial areas, excuse me, not commercial, for communal, communal areas, and personalized audits for kapuna, which are sixteen older, and conservation materials and more. So, these services are free and the materials are free for them to come on and do, do these things. So, I'll go to our BoardOfWaterSupply.com/fosterwisdom to go see a little more about what this program's about. So, that's my general announcement. I have two follow-ups from last month. I mentioned about that we had these water jugs to, for you guys. And you could ask for it, and I said, oh, I'll bring it at the next meeting. But since I'm not there, I'll have to bring it at the next time. And you guys were wondering what size it is and things like that. It's a two and a half gallon plastic bag. It's opaque, and it's about the size of a legal paper, a little larger than that, and has a pore spout. So, I'll be bringing, um, I got my, last month, you guys were saying about two for each of you, each board member. I'll be bringing that and a few for the audience, so I'll do that. And I think Mr. Nita had a question about the, um, sorry, let me scroll through this. The fifty-five gallon water, the, oh my gosh, what do you call it? The rain barrels, excuse me, fifty-five gallon rain barrels where it's available. And I was just, it was just mentioned, it's on our BoardOfWaterSupply.com conservation site. There's a rebate for forty dollars for rain barrels that are forty-five gallons or more, and you have to turn it in within six months. They have the list of where it's available, but it does say that it's on-island availability of eligible products are these, at these retailers fluctuate based on seasonal demand. So, you'd have to check with us, those participating retailers, and inquire with them, and maybe they can special order it for you. Because you were, I think he's saying there's not the fifty-five gallon, they're smaller. So, but they're supposed to be at Harder Hawaii, Wine Style Rain Gutters, AnyX Garden Shop, Sam's Club, Seasonally, City Mail, all locations, Urban Farmer Store, and online, at any retailer. So, um, I, that's what I understand about this rain barrel and for that size. So, yeah, that's the follow, two follow-ups from last month.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And thanks for the two bags you're gonna give us, so. Uh, any questions from the, you know, one second, I'm gonna have to ask the board if they have questions first. Board, any questions? Board on the WebEx? Okay, from the audience, if you have a question, yeah, can you come up to the mic, please, and ask your question? Please identify yourself.
My name is Sophie, and I live off the corner of Molly Street, above Winding. And I have noticed all the way up along Leleha Street, there are many fire hydrants. That's very good. Also, on Namakula, they have installed fire hydrants between houses. But on String Drive, there are no fire hydrants. Um, my neighbor is planning to rebuild, and she was told that because our houses are not within three hundred fifty feet of the nearest fire hydrant, we have to install water sprinklers when we rebuild. So, I brought that to Tyler, Dos Santos. He forwarded it to the Board of Water Supply, and they said that, um, our street is old, and they don't have any means of, uh, fixing the main water line. So, why is it that we cannot have a fire hydrant on our street?
Well, thanks for the question.
What's the name, what's the name of the street again?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
I'm sorry.
Stream Drive.
Stream?
S-T-R-E.
Next to the stream.
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
All right. Your question.
Yeah. Thanks for the question. I'll, I'll ask that question to our communications office that may be able to do more research on this and what, why. But, um, okay, thanks.
Are you gonna come back with that answer to us?
Yeah, I'm gonna send it over, and yeah, whatever answer I can get, I will give it back. If this resident needs to be contacted.
I'm gonna put this item under your, under your report for next month, is that okay?
Okay, yeah, if the resident doesn't mind this being publicly announced.
It'll be fire hydrant for Stream Drive, correct?
Okay, so Tyler already addressed it to the Board of Water Supply.
She's the Board of Water Supply.
He already addressed it to them.
Yeah, well, she's gonna get you an answer.
And their answer was that there was no plan to improve the main water line on our street to install fire hydrants.
Yeah, we got that answer. Let's see what, you know, well, let's see what Iris comes back with.
Yeah.
Iris?
Yeah, sure, I'll see, and I'll pose that question again and see if there's maybe a little more detail. I'll let them know that, and they probably do have records that there's this question being asked, and maybe they can provide more detail if available, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's a very, very important question, not having a fire hydrant in front of you. And you're gonna bring, have a sprinkler system? Anyway, question, yes, Christine, no?
Well, comment and a question, comment is, my family lives on Stream Drive, so I'm a little concerned about that. Um, but the question was, there is a resident in Aleva that was requesting to move the fire hydrant away from his driveway, because it's kind of blocking his driveway. So, I was just wondering, like, what would one do in that kind of a situation? Um, where it's like right on the corner of the driveway? Is there any way to move it, or is that sort of a, that's not?
What's, what's the address?
Oh, yeah, what's the address, yes.
What's, what's the address? Christine?
At, our, have the address, it's at the very top of Aleva. Um, it's right across, directly across Keela Keela.
What's the address?
I need the address.
Why don't you give me the address, and I'll put it down.
Okay, okay, yeah, I was just wondering if it's even possible to move a fire hydrant?
I can ask, they, yeah, I can ask them that question. Um, they are spaced, they are, they are constructed in space that look at a certain distances. Um, it shouldn't have been installed where it blocks the driveway, it could be on the corner like here, I think like you kind of mentioned. But it should be set back farther enough probably from the apron that it shouldn't be a hazard. So, but I cannot speak, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what it looks like. So, yeah, if we, once you provide the address, we can do a lot more research. Probably won't be able to get back by next month, but that, that would help, having an address, yeah.
Sure.
Thanks.
I'll tell you what, just give me the, send me the address.
I might be able to get it now if.
Yeah, you can get it now, then we can give it to Iris. Iris, don't go away.
Yeah, I'll be on, if you can post, if you wanna chat, put it in the chat if someone can.
Stick around, she's gonna get the address for you, don't have to go.
I'll stay as long as I can, sure, okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board? From the audience? Okay, uh, how about WebEx, anybody in the way there? Okay, when you get the, when you get that address, just raise your hand, I'll give it to her. All right, moving right along, vacancies, Sub District Four, anybody who'd like to serve on Sub District Four? Oh, okay, please give us your name.
Hi, my name is Alika Valdez, and I serve for Sub District Four.
Uh, I know you served last, the last term that we had right here. Can you tell us why you wanna serve?
I wanna serve and continue because I just wanna continue, um, serving my board and make a difference across my community.
You give us a little, something about your background, what do you, you know, work, education, what do you do, et cetera? Just so we know a little more about you.
Well, I went to Farrington, and, um, I like to go and socialize with other people and, you know, uh, and serve my community at my free time, and I like to go and, um, go and help out around in, you know, in different ways, from homelessness to, you know, um, especially towards people with, um, you know, that are having problems with, let's say, economic issues with, like, um, racial or gender equality, and things that are similar in that situations.
Are you employed?
I am employed.
Okay, you, you guys, where you employed?
Um, right now, I'm employed at Hawaii Convention Center through, um, Fire and Fire.
Okay. Questions from the board? Um, I think we'd have to verify if he's qualified in regards to our jurisdiction. Do you wanna do this now, later, or? Oh, maybe you can do it now, and I'll continue the meeting, and then if he's.
Um, so I already verified his ID, his.
And after that, you need anything else that we, we can vote on him after he qualifies?
Uh, yep, so I already checked his, um.
Oh, he does?
Yeah, he's, yeah, he lives in the sub-district.
He gets to go off. Any questions from the board? What is your pleasure? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Alika, thank you for coming down. I just wanted to ask you, what are your top three concerns for your area?
Um, homelessness, um, uh, sidewalks, that there's trash in my area currently right now. And you know where that, that empty gas, old gas station where it used to be on school in Leleha? That's another concern that, one of it, and it's not, that's the area, there's cracks in the sidewalks that I'm also concerned about, especially by the electric plant down the road, and also, um, another thing is the sidewalk cleanliness too as well, not just the Apollo, there's like, you know, like, uh, beetle nut problems on that area too. So, that's one thing that, one of my concerns that I need to get resolved if possible.
Any other questions from the board? Uh, your pleasure, board, I'll entertain a motion that we approve. I guess. No, the, uh.
If someone wanted to nominate him.
Nominate? All right, we'll go through the election process, all right.
Sure, I nominate, um, Alika to fill in Sub District Four.
Uh, move, is there a second? A move by Loy and seconded by Cora that we approve Alika Valdez to fill the vacancy for Sub District Four. Any discussion?
First, don't we have to check his ID to see if he?
Yeah, she already did.
You already?
Yes.
So, Mr. Valdez came in early and I verified.
So, he, he qualifies.
Well, the question was, why didn't you, um, be a candidate for our recent, uh, election? He was here, he was part of the board. But.
Uh, I can answer, so he was, he did, um, make a profile for the elections. He was running for the at-large seat instead of the sub-district four. So, he didn't make that.
Thank you. Any other questions, board? Any more discussion? If not, you ready for the question? Uh, how do we do this? Roll call? And if you vote for him, just say, Valdez? Okay. All right, roll call.
Kentru. Christian. Not here, Iga.
Yeah.
He's here. Oh, sorry, Christian. Wayland, Christian. Christian, are you able to turn your mic on?
Gosh, I think, it's gonna be a hard stop. You cannot be having your appointment over this long.
Iga. Ka'afu is absent. Uo.
For Valdez.
MacPherson?
Alka.
Magawai. Magawai. Would you wanna vote? Nisip, Nitsuda.
Yes, Valdez.
Thank you. Na'au'au'ota.
Valdez.
Nita. Yamomoto.
Valdez.
Chairphone.
Valdez.
Sorry.
Nine, nine votes for Valdez.
Nine votes for Valdez, uh.
Camelia, I'm sorry, to interrupt. I'm sorry, I got, I got disconnected, so my vote is Valdez.
Okay, so we have ten, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, ten for Valdez. So, you're undoubtedly elected to our board. So, how big round of applause? Hey. Camelia, you gonna swear him in now, or we take a recess for?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take a, unless there are any objections, let's take a thirty-second recess, and then we can bring him on board. Any objections? Okay, let's go ahead. Let's go over there with Camelia. Iris, are you still here? Iris? Iris? Oh, you're here, wait a second, uh, hold the line, because we're in recess.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Are we good? Okay, any questions, I'm gonna, uh, go back into regular session for recess. All right, we're now back into regular session, and we have a new board member, and his name is Aliya, Alika, I'm sorry, Alika Valdez, so welcome aboard. We have a full contingency now. Um, if, unless there are any objections, Honolulu Police Department is here, is that correct, for a report? Hello? HPD, are you there?
Yes, we're here.
All right, you're welcome, you wanna give your report?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, for the month of July, we had two aggravated assaults, five auto thefts, four burglaries, zero robberies, two sex assaults, three simple assaults, eight thefts, and two car break-ins. We had a total calls for service were eleven hundred and seventy-one. And, safety tip for us is, um, now that school is back in session, try and allot yourself a little extra time to get from places to places, because the traffic is gonna pick up. Um, also have Sergeant Tablet online, and see if she wanted to say anything.
Does anyone have any questions for us? Good evening, everyone.
Is that it? You just waiting for questions? Any questions from the board? Yes, Loy. Hello?
Hi, good evening, sir. Hi, sir.
I'd just like to mahalo you guys for last month. Uh, with regard to my request, this is for our parking situation on Nala Kila app. So, after the meeting and throughout the month, I noticed the relief was dramatic and instant, so uh, very much mahalo you guys. Uh, clearing that, keeping the sidewalk open, the improved sidewalk open, I think allows the pedestrian to walk up and down. So, every day when I drive down, I see the kids going to Nala Kila school now, and then even the kapuna's walking up, and they, they have a clear space as they walk through that area, so very much mahalo.
Thank you, sir, is that the Nala Kila Avenue and Kamakaling, is that, is that the area?
Yes, yes, Arj.
I have a question, um, you know, you see, you have, you mentioned before sexual assaults. What kind of sexual assaults are you talking about? Is it domestic, or is it, uh, random?
It's two. We had two sex assaults, sir.
Oh, two, all right. What were they? Domestic?
Hang on.
Another reason I ask, I wonder if we're talking about a random on-the-street sexual assault? I mean, just like in Chinatown, we had a chemical assault, and that was really random, that kind of blew my mind, but I wanted, just wanna make sure, you know, our, I'm assuming it's females are safe walking the streets like our neighborhood.
Um, one of them was like indecent exposure. The other one was, um, actually, uh, son reported to his mother that, um, he was inappropriately touched by his father, I guess they're separated, and, uh, it was a family thing. Those are the two that were reported.
I think that answers my question. Any other questions from the board, out of the audience? WebEx, Loy again, go ahead.
Hello, again, uh, HPD, um, I think a few days ago, I heard there was a stabbing at the parking lot down the street of Nala Kila, and I believe made the news. Just, um, I understand, I think the details were explained in the uh, news coverage, but is there any, I guess, chance of happening in the future? Is that, uh, what is HPD doing as far as making sure something like that doesn't happen? Is that a hotspot possibly for drug deals, or something to that effect? Anything that, I guess, residents can take precaution?
Well, they were acquaintances, sir, uh, that's all we can release at this moment, but, uh, he declined to further, I guess, prosecute this case. They, they, the, the person that was arrested is familiar with the, the person that incurred the injuries. It, it wasn't random, is that, is that what you're asking, sir?
Yes, I, I guess to that effect, so there shouldn't be worries that, uh, let's say if I'm to visit the senior center or use the basketball court there, um, I, I should have no reservations to continue to do so?
None at all, sir, it's a safe parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on. Uh, item four, election of a board officer, we have one vacancy, that's secretary, and I'm opening the nominations for secretary of our board.
I nominate Chance.
Any, but, any other nominations? Don't need, don't need second, any other nominations? Okay, if not, I'm gonna entertain a motion that we close the nominations, and that, I'm gonna shortcut this, and have Chance as our secretary. Can I entertain such a motion? Move by Darren, seconded by Christine.
Second.
Okay. Okay, any, any discussion? If not, I'm gonna do a roll call, I'm gonna cut this short. Roll call in regards to having Chance as our secretary? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Kentru. Christian. Now you have, um, like.
If you could pronounce his last name, that would help.
Okay, yep, got you, thank you.
Oh, my gosh, okay, I couldn't unmute earlier, um, yeah, for Chance.
Okay, Iga. Ka'afu is not here. Uo. MacPherson. Magawai.
Chance.
Nitsuda. Nitsuda. Pek'skip. Chance. Nita. Yamomoto. Na'au'ota? Chairphone.
Um, no, Chance? I have a hard tongue.
Nine votes for Chance.
All right, a big round of applause for our new secretary. All right, a big round of applause for our new secretary. All right, very good. First thing, Mr. Secretary, I wanna ask you to make a list of a roster of our members and get, get it, one for Alika too. And, uh, I'm gonna ask Chance to get, ask you for your telephone numbers if you wanna give it out. We'll make confidential, but I need a roster of everybody who's on our board, name, email, and telephone number, so I can contact you if I need to. Is that okay? And again, if you're, you want your cell phone or anything confidential, just, you know, put it down. Uh, this is not to be circulated, I'll tell you right now. Okay? Questions? All right, looking right along. Uh, resident concerns, any resident concerns? Okay, everybody's happy. Very good. Oh, yes. Loy.
I, I sure was, I, I gotta, I guess, hell, I, I, I guess, typically I can kind of determine if it's kind of like, uh, you know, fraud or something, a scam. But this one's a little bit convincing that I got it actually today. And it says from a collection agency that says that I owe money in a four-figure range to the state of Hawaii Emergency Ambulance Services. So, I, I can't quite recall, but is there, which agency would be? Or is there any government agency or advices that can be offered? How do I go about without getting more trapped or ensnaring this possibly a scam?
Anybody wanna answer this from the government? There we go, Ed, good.
So the ambulance services, sorry, Edward Los Angeles Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. So ambulance services on this island is managed by the city, uh, Honolulu Emergency Services, uh, department. So, those are the folks that you could call to see whether or not it's legitimate or not. Um, sometimes when I get those weird letters, I like to just Google them and see, you know, what kind of response they get. A lot, a lot of times they're come out right away as, you know, it's a scam or not.
Answer your question, Loy. Okay, thanks, thanks, Ed. Any other questions, concerns? Yes, Darren?
This one's also Ed, but I'll check with him afterwards. But there is a resident in my neighborhood that is concerned about telephone poles blocking her driveway for an ambulance to go down. So I have address of it and I'll give you an address, but I'll meet with you afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Anybody else on the board?
I have a question. Where is it in County? You know, um, last month, um, the representative for this district said Nausa Naukila had an easement um, variance that they can park all the way to the road. So there's no easement at all. And my question was, doesn't that, um, so-called Nausa Naukila business bring it to the board or someone bring it to the board to notify the board that they are applying for this easement? So, we don't have questions by the residents telling um, Nausa Naukila is parking on the easement and all that. I mean, um, somehow we, we, we got, we would, uh, we didn't get connected. And I thought all matters for the public has to be brought to the board attention.
Ed, you wanna answer? Let me see if I can remember, uh, jog my memory. Didn't somebody say that they had a conditional use permit?
So it was representative-
Jenna said that?
Yeah, Representative Takanouchi had mentioned those things, um. I'm not aware of the easement, but I do know that Nausa Naukila, you know, was around pre-World War II. So it could have been something that, you know, existing that, you know, wouldn't have come to the neighborhood for it because it was disdated.
Um, I disagree because the parking area is paved recently. So if you didn't have a so-called permit, I don't think you can so-called put asphalt right to the road.
So I, I guess my comment was point was directed at the, um, easement already being in place and, but, you know, prior to it, I don't have information of it. I can take a look and get back with you or I can-
Yeah.
Can you, uh, talk to, uh, Representative Takanouchi as well?
Yeah.
Good, yeah, I'll put it on the agenda. Okay. All right, I, I'll put in your, uh, report next, next month. Any, any other concerns? Yes, Alika.
So, um, on, uh, School Street, uh, so passing through Liliha and you make a left on School Street heading westbound, there is potholes. Uh, I think they're doing like construction roadwork. Um, you know, when you go to that triangle area where the freeway and the bridges, right, right across the medical center, the old gas station lot, and there's two apartments. Um, there's, um, like, uh, metal, um, uh, like a point of where the potholes and stuff, where they fix all that on the roads. I have a question. So I noticed a bunch of city buses at night because on Dunodar Route Two would run every twenty, uh, twenty-four hours and non-stop. And I noticed they would slow down because people at the apartments would sleep and some don't slow down, some would just go fast and make dun-dun, dun-dun, because I could even hear it already on the port port and I live around that area, especially at night. You could really hear it really loudly. And I don't know the, um, Department of Transportation would know anything about that? Uh, or the bus company, Oahu Transit Services. So that's the concern that I am wanting to know.
Let me, let me ask, ask you, do you know the address? In front of where the potholes are located and then Ed can check.
Uh, five twenty-six North School, School Street between five one eight North School Street.
Ed, you got that? Okay, you'll double check. We report that. Thank you. Anybody else on the board? About from the audience? Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name is Sophie again. Um, I have a concern going up Poli Highway, um, past School Street. Um, there's two lanes going up Poli. And cars on the left side of Poli Highway cross over to the right lane and cross over to Poa exit. And there's no solid line that prevents them from doing that. So, um, I have concern about that.
You mean the location again?
It's above School Street.
Above?
Going to Poli Highway.
Above School Street, okay.
Where the Hongpa Honganji is.
That's on our right.
Right, there's the, uh, Poa exit.
Okay.
No solid line for the cars on the left-hand side of the Poli Highway. So they cross over to the right lane and cross over to Poa exit. And it's happened many times because I go home from Nuan Yai.
Yeah, did you get that? Do you know where that is? Okay, I'm, so basically what should we call this? Right turn, right turn on Poli to Poa? What, you know?
No, the Poli, you know the Poa exit?
Yes.
Okay, so the cars on the left-hand side going up Poli Highway, they cross over to the right lane and cross over to Poa. But there's no solid line for them to not cross over. They should be on the right-hand main to go to Poa.
Um, no, just to clarify, it's a, and just to clarify for everyone here, it's a safety concern in regards to cars crossing over too late, going from the far-right lane, not far-right but far-left lane, going up the Poli, crossing over from the right lane and crossing over two more lanes to get to the Poa exit. But they're crossing over too late, that's your concern, yeah. And you're asking if you can add a solid line to help mitigate that?
Yeah.
Okay. You, you know what she's talking about. I know what she's talking about. I thought there was a solid line. There isn't. I'll tell you what you, why don't you double check? Okay, so basically you're talking about going up Poli Highway, past Hangonji, and then someone on the left lane is crossing over two lanes to get to Poa Street, right? And she's saying, why don't we have a solid line on the left? So nobody can go two lanes over to Poa. Yeah, good D of T. D of T, yeah. Okay. Anybody else from the audience? Good questions. Somebody on the Webex? Yes, Webex, who? Hello? Can you identify yourself? If not, I'm gonna move on.
Yes, hi, this is Sue Everhart, hello.
Oh, okay, yes, go ahead.
My neighborhood concern is I wanted to update the neighborhood board. We met with Jenna Takanouchi and Donna Kim and her staff, and we're able to meet with Kamehameha regarding the maintenance pit and the overgrowth issues. Uh, we met on July eighteenth. And thereafter, there were supposed to be some follow-up with Kamehameha getting back to either Jenna's office or Senator Kim's. After that meeting, we thought that Kamehameha would be a little bit more discretionary with the noise, but after the meeting, it seems like every day they continue with the noise. Because I've been keeping a log of them and their activities. It's every day.
So the meeting that you have with Kamehameha School, which I, I had met with them before I left on my trip, you're saying that they're not doing anything? Or are they trying to do something? Or what is it?
They have to return, they had to, there was some action, uh, agendas that they were supposed to get back with Senator Kim and Representative Takanouchi's office.
Okay, so this must be-
Both of them were very, very al- Yes, they were very, they were supposed to be update and they were very, very helpful for both Kelton and everybody there, Donna Kim, uh, Kathy. Everybody was very, very helpful. But what I'm saying is Kamehameha has not shown any, uh, it's actually an increase of activity more than anything else lately.
So, you had your meeting. Yeah, they supposed to come back to you? Are you supposed to have another meeting at, as a follow-up?
Kelton, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I said, you had your meeting, I know. Are you supposed to have another follow-up meeting?
Oh, excuse me, Chair. This is Kathy from Senator Kim's office. I can, um, and I can step in for, uh, Ms. Everhart.
Sure, go ahead.
If you don't mind. Okay, so, um, what Ms. Everhart is saying is that, um, yes, so there was action items from the meeting with Rep. Takanouchi and, um, Kamehameha was supposed to do some follow-up um, that was requested, um, stemming from that meeting and, um, you know, getting into contact with Rep. Takanouchi and, um, Senator Kim. So as far as what Ms. Everhart is saying is that since that meeting that took place, um, I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, is that correct? Sorry, off the top of my head, I can't remember the date, but, um-
It was July eighteenth.
July eighteenth, yeah, so, um, kind of in the middle of last month. So, what she's saying is that since then, there's been an increase. And so Sue, um, definitely Ms. Everhart contacted our office. So what we've been advising her is to, um, keep, you know, keep monitoring the situation and keep documenting so that when Kamehameha does follow up with Senator Kim's office, for example, we can go ahead and provide them with that documentation and ask for reasoning as to, you know, why they're not complying with the times that they had mentioned, which I believe was one to two thirty. Is that right, Sue?
That's what they said in the meeting, that they are only supposed to do work from one to two thirty, but the point of the whole meeting was they have to show proof that they even have permits to do that in a residential area. They haven't even come back to address that. But it's just, it, it's like the activity has increased and there's, there's nothing being done.
There's nothing been done, is that what you're saying?
They haven't had any follow-up. Um, there's, what she's saying is Kamehameha hasn't provided any follow-up or, nor has she, um, Ms. Everhart is saying, have they made a goodwill good faith effort to, I guess, comply or, or show permits that they are allowed to do that work? Is that correct, Sue?
Yes, that is correct.
So my question then is, what is our state representative and our city council member doing?
Um, hi, this is Kelton from Rep. Takanouchi's office. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, everything that Sue, um, and Kathy have been saying is, is correct from my understanding. Um, we have requested several action items from, uh, Kamehameha Schools. Um, we set the deadline of actually this week, uh, by the end of this week, them getting back to us with, uh, those action items. Um, I will follow up with Rep. Takanouchi, um, and pass along, you know, Sue's concerns that they haven't, um, you know, dialed back the noise or anything like that. But one of the action items was to, uh, check there, they have some kind of sound detection system to check when exactly they are creating the noise. So that, that's something we expect an answer from the school this week. If that offers any clarification.
What I'm gonna do is this, so I'm gonna wait for your report coming next month. I'm gonna put under your under-representative Takano, Takanouchi, a, a follow-up on scam school and noise, okay? Can you report back to us? I mean, let, let me just tell you, the neighborhood board can be a, is a facilitator. We're not an enforcer. So they've got the right individuals. You got this, our state representative and our city council member to do something. I don't think you need anybody else. So I'm gonna leave it up to you for, to satisfy the, our residents, is that okay? You can coordinate this with, uh, uh, council member, uh, uh, Tyler Isantos, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll-
Okay.
Pass that on to Rep. Takanouchi. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sue, is that okay?
Yes, and plus if the mayor is also, the mayor's representative is also there to see about the permits, to see have, have him also be part of this solution.
Okay, well, he's sitting right here. He heard you.
Chair.
Yes, who's chair?
It's me, Walid. So I, I attended that meeting with Sue Everhart and, uh, Representative Takanouchi and Senator Makato Kim. Uh, the final say was, uh, Donna Makato Kim had asked Kamehameha Schools to please check on the permits and to get back to either the representative or the senator before this meeting. So I don't know what has transpired, but I do know that if they get ahold of Ms. Makala from Kamehameha Schools, she was the one that was representing Kamehameha Schools there at the meeting. Ayos.
Okay, thank you. Who, Ed, who should we have as appoint POC in this? I don't, you got three individuals now. You have the representative, you have the council member, and you know, you got the mayor. So who do you think should, uh, lead this, this charge here? I got, uh, Representative Letter B. Can, can, um, can Representative Takanouchi be the lead in this? So I don't have to put it under three individuals?
Yeah, we're, we're more than happy. We, we facilitated the meeting and-
Okay, then we're gonna put you as the lead and you can coordinate with, with all the senator and, uh, the, uh, council member and the, the city rep. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay with you, Ed? Got it. Yes. Yes. Wait one second, yes. Sure.
Uh, this is a question posed to the representatives. What happens, or what is going to happen if camp schools does not meet the action items you guys posed at this meeting?
Um, you know, that's a very good question. I'm not entirely, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure if I'm able to answer that at this current point, but that's something I can bring up to Rep. Takanouchi and, um, you know, report back at the, uh, next meeting. I, if that's okay with the board. I apologize for not knowing that.
Yeah, I think what Chance is, uh, asking is what kind of remedies and what kind of penalties, you know, can be imposed? That's pretty much it. I mean, all talk is great, but you gotta have some action, okay? So again, I'm gonna reiterate that I'm putting this item under, uh, Representative Takanouchi. She'll come back and coordinate with, I guess, Senator Kim, council member Tyler Isantos, and, uh, city rep.
Oh, excuse me, Chair.
Yes, who?
Sorry, this is Kathy from Senator Kim's office again. Can I just add to, um, yeah, so, um, we'll, um, also, uh, kind of defer to, uh, Rep. Takano, Takanouchi as far as the action, and I can also follow up with Senator Kim um, to get a more definitive answer to, um, board member's question. Um, one thing, I was gonna bring this up during Senator Kim's time, however, um, another kind of, um, remedy, not necessarily directly with Kamehameha, but influenced by, partly by the Kamehameha incident, is that Senator Kim is part of a noise working group. And so they are looking at, um, using that kind of work group with HPD, DOH's Noise Division to kind of look at legislation going forward um, for, um, you know, introducing penalties that are not already being addressed under the law. So, that's another thing that we can, um, look at. It's not necessarily a direct penalty. Um, for that, I, like I said, I would have to check with Senator Kim, but, um, that is, you know, one of the things that Senator has on her plate right now, if that kind of helps.
Let me ask you this question. Since she's a senator and uh Jenna is a representative, does uh Senator Kim want to take the lead on this? I'm assuming she has more clout.
Well, because this initially was with Representative Takanouchi, um that's why Senator um has deferred to her and she's the, she is representative is the one who um organized the meeting. That would have to be a discussion between the two of them. Um, I don't think in this case, it's not really about clout. It's just that what the senator has a bigger district, right, compared to Representative Takanouchi? Um, so that doesn't necessarily translate into, you know, because she's a senator, she'll get more things done than the representative as far as the departments. They're still elected officials.
So the bottom line to my question is that Senator Kim doesn't mind yielding the leadership or the lead on this matter to Representative Takanouchi. Is that correct?
Yes.
And she'll and she'll coordinate with her and the rest.
Yes.
Okay. Now, Robert, I I know you're dying to say something. Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, yeah, uh, my name is Robert. I actually am Sue's neighbor. And then the issue, I was also in that meeting. And the issue that I brought up was uh it's the noise that are there doing or creating is in a R five zone area. And I think uh Senator Kim was gonna check to see if they do have a permit. And I'm pretty sure they don't. So that's that's uh for Senator Kim to uh find. I think she was taking steps to find out. She actually came out to the property and then she actually saw the issues that we're uh experiencing. The noise, the dust, and so forth.
Yeah.
I'm sure they know about this. All right, anybody else on the board? Anybody?
Yes.
Wait, Donald first.
Yeah. Why are we getting involved? I mean, we weren't invited to the meeting. We don't know too much. We don't know anything about the problem. So why are you guys bringing it to the board for a remedy? Because we're not involved.
Yeah, let me answer that question.
Chair, can I answer?
Wait, no, I'll answer that question. I was invited to come to the do be a part of the meeting and I refused to be a part of the, I say that I won't refuse by decline. Cause I didn't think it was our job, it was in with our daily work to be part of the discussion. I said before, we are here as facilitators and we're to bring the parties together, residents, and basically who can enforce and get the action. The board can't do any action. We have no power. We can facilitate. So to answer your question, yes, we were asked and I declined. And I told them, work it out. Tell us what you resolve. I mean, if push comes to shove, you know, they can go ahead and go to court, you know, I mean, but it's up to them. Okay? Any other questions? Yes, who's this?
Me, Walin.
Hi, Walin, what's up?
Hi. So um I went to the meeting on my own as a constituent, not as a neighborhood board member. However, the reason why I did go was so that I had more information and better information at this meeting. So um I did hear some of the testimony. I will say this, I think with the residents having to wait another full month because of the issues that I heard, I think something needs to be done sooner than that. So if we can ask whoever we've designated, whether it's Rep. Takanouchi or Senator Donna Makato Kim or Councilmember Dos Santos Tam or whoever it is, if we can get it before the next meeting, I think that would really help the residents. And that is why we are here as board members. I yield.
Okay, thank you very much. Good comment. Anybody else?
Just Lloyd. Just commenting as a board member and just a resident and neighbor. Um, with noise issues like this, I think it comes down to reasonableness, in my opinion. There's no absolute quiet. Um, our neighborhood, you got the H one, you know, and so we gotta kind of objectively kind of maybe kind of look at this. What's the ambience noise level? And it's usually measured in decibels. And maybe like the noise we're talking about, what's the decibel, you know, um? So with the iPhones, I think there are apps out there. But it's not as accurate if you get a, you know, scientific equipment. But with the different decibel levels and maybe the exposure time, the hours a day, that might give us a little bit more understanding. I know previous meetings, it was brought up that um one of the noise was about possibly the school crushing uh run, sorry, uh treadmills, old treadmill machines, but I hardly doubt that they're crushing treadmills every day. So maybe there's some other noise we're talking about, you know, I I don't know what what it is. But my son is in a marching band, so you know, at a football game, obviously they make a lot of noise, but to me, that's reasonable in a surrounding regardless of the.
Lloyd, I'm gonna inter, Lloyd, I'm gonna interrupt you. I think we we know your point. Robert, I don't think it needs a retort. Thank you. Okay, any other questions by the board or comments by the board? How about the audience? How about Webex? Okay.
I just wanna, uh, excuse me, I just wanna make sure, um, just so I'm, everyone's on the, I'm gonna be reporting back uh next month um about what kind of um recourse there is if um whatever is agreed upon doesn't happen, that would be one thing. And then the other thing is the result of the action items. That's what we'll be reporting on. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say again?
Um, so I just wanted to make sure I have, you know, the correct information that I'm gonna be reporting back next month. Um, I'm gonna be reporting back on the a action items from the Kamehameha Schools meeting. And then I'll also be reporting back on um, you know, what kind of recourse there is if they don't um follow through on on what on their word essentially. Is that correct?
Yes, I think you got it. I think, and as Weyland said, you know, we hope that uh, you know, there's a resolution in regards to the concerns of the residents. So you got the three powers there. Is it three? Representative, council member, Senator, and the city. So I hope you guys can do something to remedy this, you know, come up with a solution. So you got the, tell Jenna, I'm sorry, Representative Takanouchi, she's got the ball. And you can, you know, pass it through the other three and come back with some kind of solution. Right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the board want to say anything? Audience?
Lloyd. Sorry, Chair, but just wanna further comment. I know years ago, they had a tree. Perhaps that blocked the noise, but somewhere along the line, the trees were all cut down and possibly that's, you know, at the residence request, you know, they wanna see a better view. So one of the solution I don't like being talked about, possibly just having more plantation, you know, some sort of vegetation as a sound barrier. So that's. Okay, so but I I would like to know, in addition to crushing of the treadmills, what kind of noises are we talking about? Because if we're asking about permits, you know, are we talking about construction permit or noise permit from D O H or?
Lloyd, Lloyd, I'm gonna cut you off. It's not for us to know what kind of noise. The residents will tell them what noise and they're gonna have it resolved by these representatives. I'm gonna ask, Bert, you need something, say something? No, okay, thank you. I wanna move on unless there's really something pressing. Okay? All right, um. Unless there's anything else, let's move on to the next item. Any reports of members attending other members, uh, meetings that may be uh germane to us? Okay, if not, uh, Ompa.
Hi, um, I attended the last regular meeting of the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization for Transportation for Oahu. And um this was August sixth. And there were two uh presentations, one about the Oahu Mobility Hub. This is a study that uh is funded um by the, I guess, the city and state. Um, and they were reporting on Haleiva's mobility hub. Came up with some proposals. And this is just for planning purposes. Um, there's a lot of community involvement um reacting to the different ones. I won't go into it because that's Haleiva. But in of interest is the net, there's also going to be an urban Honolulu mobility hub study. And these are hubs where um the residents will be able to transfer better to different types of transportation. Um, and of course, the urban Honolulu one will probably involve rail. Um, there's also another uh study that was, or not study, the other major presentation was about proposed bus bus service changes uh with regard to skyline, with the opening of the different phases. And so there will be, need to be some changes in the bus um to provide uh connection to the rail, also to prevent duplication of service. And uh, so I guess the only thing that for us is of concern is probably the Waikiki airport to Waikiki um section of it. And that's still undergoing um some discussion. Um, and then the phase three is when we will be affected more when when it comes to Dylan camp and such. Um, is Hawaii Bicycle League here to do their presentation? This is on the agenda? Is Hawaii Bicycle League here? They are, okay, so I won't, I won't go into it. But yep, there there's uh an interesting um event that they have. If anybody wants to try the different electric e-bikes, and uh there's a two hour workshop that they're presenting, they can go into that. Um, they provide like ten to twelve different types of e-bikes, which you can try, you know, to see what might suit you if you're interested. Um, they'll they'll mention all the laws, have helmets available too, so.
Thank you, Cora. We were gonna have a uh, we're gonna have a report by the Hawaii Bicycle League. Sure, they'll they'll ask those questions. Any questions, Cora? Okay, moving right along, uh, let's see. Oh, presentations, speaking of. Do we have a representative from the Hawaii Bicycle Bicycle League? They asked to talk. I guess not. Did you want to say something? No? Okay. All right.
If anybody's interested in the e-bikes, um, just go to uh their website. Um, their information is, you have to go all the way in to, you know, register for the event, but it's h b l dot org. There are also other types of educational um events that they have, classes, how to ride bikes on roads and um trikes for seniors.
Well, you know, now that they brought it up, I was gonna ask the representative, but of the bike, the, what's an e-bike? Do you, I mean, if you can answer it, yeah, but if not.
Like, I can't because I don't remember all the, but there there's specific definitions and what what an e-bike is as opposed to uh, you know, o- other types of uh powered vehicles.
Let me ask it. E-bikes is, I think that it's electric, right? That's easy, right? Yeah. How fast do they go, you know? Never mind, that's a rhetorical question. Do they need a special, special license and can they? Do they just drive on the the road? That's a question you can answer later. Unless somebody in the audience can ask that. No, all right. Yeah, I'm curious. And you know, there's some scooters that are electric. Can they travel on the roadway too? This, okay, I I'm just curious. I've seen some. It's dangerous. And should they wear helmets? Never mind. These are all questions that maybe somebody can answer. All right, any other questions? Okay, if not, our next presentation is pesticides. Thank you for coming.
Mahalo, Chair. Mahalo, community members. Um, my name is Yvonne Noro. Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. And pardon my back. Um, I am coming from the office of Representative Caruso. I do work for Representative Caruso, but I am attending in my personal capacity. Um, because I do want to share a little bit about the work that we are doing um during the interim led by and spearheaded by our intern interim interns. Um, I'm so sorry, my back is teed, folks, but um our interns have been doing a lot of work discussing with community advocates, mainly folks with Hapa, the Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action on the work of pesticide use in our communities. Um, so I wanted to extend their work. They're actually presenting at Wa Manalo and this board um also agreed to having us on the same day, so I'm sharing their presentation with you folks. Um, but if you folks have any questions, feel free to ask um at any time and I'll take questions at the end as well. Uh, but just so you start, oh, sorry, next slide, please. Just as so we can have the same baseline, pesticides are substances that are designed to kill or deter pests, including insects, weeds, fungi, and rodents. They can be chemical, synthetic, or biological pesticides. Um, chemical often are more dangerous to human health and the environment. Um, pesticide use and exposure are a human and health concern. They have been shown to cause cancers, disrupt hormones, harm reproductive health, harm our nervous system, cause kidney or liver problems. Thank you. Um, and then on the environmental, in terms of environmental impacts, they're also known to reduce the microbial life in the soil, making soil less effective in sequestering carbons and uh it's sequestering carbon and retaining water. Um, so many of you folks are probably familiar with Roundup, which is a general use pesticide. These are things that you can spray in the home, um, things you can access uh through your local farmer store. Um, but I'm gonna dive into a little bit of a restricted use pesticides and how they are harming our communities. Next slide, please. So restricted use pesticides are pesticides that are not available for purchase or use by the general public uh due to their potential for causing unreasonable adverse effects on the environment or human health. R U Ps are still, R U Ps still impact our community via the local produce that may, you may be buying from your farms um located in north or central Oahu. Um, and according to some of the data that's already been collected since the twenty nineteen, um, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen, uh Act forty five um law that was passed in twenty eighteen. Um, restricted use pesticides are commonly sprayed in north and central Oahu and west Hawaii, which is where most of my local produce are grown. Um, Act forty five also established, oh, also established the one hundred foot buffer zones around schools stating that no person shall apply a restricted use pesticide on or within one hundred feet of a school property during normal school hours. Next slide, please. So some examples of restricted use pesticides include one three dichloropropane, uh which is used to control nematodes and other soil borne pests, including fungi and insects. Um, in twenty nineteen, the first, after the first report, um, we came to find that one hundred and seventy seven, over one hundred and seventy seven thousand pounds were sprayed in twenty eighteen. Um, one three D is a groundwater contaminant and it is highly prone to drift. So neighborhoods in that area, near parcels where they are spraying this chemical, this pesticide, um, folks can be exposed to the toxins. Um, other impacts to their health include respiratory impacts, dizziness, nausea, vomiting. Um, and then metam, metam sodium is also a soil fumigant used primarily in agriculture to control soil borne pests like fungi, nematodes, weed seeds, and insects before planting. They are highly prone to drift um and could travel up to over one mile away from where they're being sprayed. And symptoms also include weakness, blurred vision, cramps, pupil constriction, sweating, lower pulse, and muscle nerves. Our next slide, please. So while Act forty five helps to protect our communities from R U Ps, there are general exemptions from other pesticides such as neontropinoids. Um, I'll refer to them as neonex moving forward, um, which are among the most widely used insecticides worldwide. Um, these are also found in like dog collars in your homes when you're building um, building extra, an extra, building something. Um, neonex are also uh injected into the wood to protect the wood from termites, uh most commonly. Uh, neonex also act on the nervous system of insects with very low toxicity to mammals and minimal exposure. Um, the environmental impact, um, so they're they're therefore considered a reduced risk pesticide. But neonex are not currently classified as restricted use, so they're not subject to reporting. Unfortunately, top, these are toxic to our pollinators, including our native, uh native bees and our native birds. Um, there are also exemptions to reporting made at the federal level to research. Under FIFRA, which is the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, or Densicide Act, the type of registration is through the experimental use permits, um, also known as E U Ps, which allows manufacturers to field test pesticides under development. So manufacturers like these big chemical companies such as Bayer, um also known known as Monsanto and Syngenta, they test on these GMO crops on our Hawaiian islands, which could have. they test on these GMO crops on our Hawaiian islands, which could have adverse consequences on our agricultural resources. And these are also not subject, always, they could be exempt to reporting. Next slide, please. So while Act 45 is not enough, it's a good start. And one of the reasons why we wanted to come here and present to the board, we're actually presenting on our, on our way to presenting to all of the neighborhood boards on Oahu is we want to get folks involved, get folks aware about what's being discussed in the communities, in communities that are really close to these parcels, the health impacts that they have to those communities and like what the implications are to you folks as well, as folks buying the produce from our local farmers. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna go through this slide quickly. I know you folks have a lot more on your agenda, but I've also shared this with the neighborhood board, so if you folks want to see the slides, you can refer to it on the Google Drive as well. Next slide, please. So in terms of reporting, this is what it looks like, the top bar is what it looks like for folks, applicators, farmers, who need to report the restricted use pesticides that they're spraying on their parcels. And what is highlighted in green is what they're required to present or what they're required to report every, every year. And, sorry, it's a little small, but in white are the items that they aren't required to, which include the time that the spring sprayed, the type of pests or crop that they're treating for, and then the formulation dilution rate. So while on the left side map, that's just an overview of where folks, where the highest concentrations are, with red being the highest concentration on Oahu. And then the right map is just a zoomed-in version of your folks' community, which I, I think I've included your entire community. And as you can see, there's no, there are no parcels near you folks, which is a good thing. But if we go on to the next slide, you'll see that this parcel or this map shows all of the schools in your folks' community. But while I am highlighting RUPs in this slide and that there's no RUPs being sprayed near your community, that doesn't mean that there's no general use pesticides that are being sprayed, whether that be at like parks or, you know, school campuses. I know that it takes a lot of work to maintain these areas that are kids' or communities' use. And sometimes pesticides do have to be used for whatever reason, but I encourage you folks to also look online and also just to do your research as well on like what's being sprayed in your community.
Let me ask you a question before you go on. I noticed on the map on the left, you have red, yellow, and brown. Is that the concentrations of pesticides?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't include a legend, but red being the higher concentration parcels where a combination of these restricted use pesticides are being sprayed, as well as like a higher frequency of them being sprayed.
So I noticed in Honolulu, that there's, there's no, no color.
There's, there's no parcels currently in Honolulu, which, you know, makes sense. There's not a lot of farm farming.
So I guess we're safe.
In terms of restricted use pesticides, yes, potentially.
Thank you.
Um, next slide, please. So I also wanted to share some of the current ideas, some of the discussions that are happening with our office, our interns, and our community advocates. What we're looking for is better reporting. We do need the community to be aware of what's going on, so if you folks find that there are pesticides that are being sprayed in your community and you're interested in taking that up to your legislators or to your elected officials, please have that discussion. It's a huge discussion in our communities, in representatives' district. But also could be, you folks can be involved as well. Increased buffer zones, so like I shared earlier, metametham sodium has a high drift rate of up to a mile, even more on a really windy days. But currently, our buffer zones only protect up to 100 feet around our schools. Larger fines, punishments for illegal use, the classification of neonex as an RUP, and then soil testing as well as better labeling. Next slide, please. And this is how you can help. So our office has, or will be sharing a draft resolution that the board can take up at another time if you folks feel that this is something that you're interested in presenting to elected officials or government officials. We also ask that the community share your experience, share your concerns about pesticides being used in your public areas and to participate in session. Also, hold community meetings, contact your elected officials, educate others about pesticide use in schools, and then also stand with your farmers, support locally owned organic farms, and help farmers to transition to organic practices. Next slide, please. And then if you're interested in learning a little bit more, this is another community partner. So Rewild Your Campus is a national movement working towards eliminating synthetic pesticides from all college campuses in the U.S. by 2030. We know that they've engaged with the University of Kauai at Anoa and the other campuses across Oahu and across the Hawaiian Islands. But they can also start working with DOE public schools or schools in our community as well. And I can share their link if you folks are available for their bootcamp, their training. It teaches folks about the impacts on human, pesticides on human and environmental health. They're having it on August 19th. You can either scan that QR code, or I can also put the link in the, share the link with you folks. And last slide, please. And these are also some resources that I wanted to leave with you. So as I mentioned earlier, our community advocates, HAPPA, are, were one of our major resources through this. They've been doing this work for decades. So we want to like really uplift some of the work that they've been doing behind this issue and share what they're preparing in, ahead of the legislative session. We also have Canva resources and then the maps with the screenshots that I shared, they're under our map series. But without further ado, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Yvonne. Thank you, representative too. Any questions? Can we turn on the lights? Yeah. Any questions from the board first? Yes, go ahead, Chance.
In, thank you. In terms of, I guess ways to combat the use of artificial pesticides, so the, as you put it, the RUPs, has the, I guess, the legislature looked at possibly making a push to, for farmers to use natural pesticides?
You know, I don't, I've only been with her office, and I'm sorry, I've only been with her office for two years, so I don't know the extent to which she's introduced pesticide legislation before my time, but that would be something we can look into, and I can look back at what she's introduced before to see if she's done it, but in the last two years, I haven't noticed yet.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Karen.
So the coconut prenosterous beetle, I don't know if you know how they're treating them, but that is a big deal right now. Does the pesticide treatment or the control method, does that conflict with what you're?
Yeah, so one of the methods that folks are using primarily, which is like injections of the, of trees, of the coconut trees, are neonex, so neonicotinoids, and it's really like a conflicting issue because I know folks are, would want to combat CRB and like combat the spread of this invasive species, but also balancing what it's, what are we exposing our family to? What are we exposing our soil to, contaminating our soil and then potentially our waterways? I've been told that the prirethrin, which is the chemical, the natural chemical that these neonex are being, are being formulated to use, those have a shorter lifespan in our environment, so they're better. But that's also still being studied, and we've discussed with folks at UH about like some of the other methods that they're using to combat CRB.
Thank you. That's very good. By the way, what is your background?
So I recently graduated with a master's in public administration, but prior to that, I have a bachelor's degree in natural resource conservation.
All right, all right, all right. Uh, yes, Donald.
You know, in your second presentation in the yellow, next to the winey range. And yellow means what?
So yellow, in terms of that spectrum, so it was yellow, orange, red, it's, it's kind of a range between how frequent and how many different restricted use pesticides those applicators are spraying on their parcel. So in the last slide, I shared those QR codes with the map series. If you're interested in looking more at like different parcels and what they're spraying, it goes into detail, so you can like click through it.
No, uh, the second slide was, like I said, the winey range, and that, that area looks like scurfium. Now, does the federal government or the federal agencies comply with your rules?
Yeah, so they're under FIFRA compliance, so anyone who is spraying these RUPs in our state, they have to report it to the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity now.
All right, thank you. Good, good question, good question, especially after the, you know, never mind. All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions from the board? Yes, Loi.
I'm sorry if I missed it while I was turning off the switch for the light, but are we talking about enforcement issues where people are not reporting, or are we talking about policy issue that needs to be changed? Because I understand like restricted pesticides, there could be a thousand of them, so I highly doubt that in our neighborhood, there's none that's even like for termites and stuff like that, that's all restricted pesticide.
So it's kind of a combination. So the discussions that we're having in our office are about enforcement, you know, what can the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity do more with this information? We, we are pushing for better reporting. We know that these farmers, applicators are reporting once a year. And considering the loose restriction on like when they're reporting, like the time, what they're treating, things like that, we're hoping that if we have better reporting measures in place, then that'll inform the community more about, you know, like what's being done in these parcels and bring more transparency to the communities. I guess, yes, for you folks, it's not as much of a priority because you aren't near these neighboring parcels. But it is something that we would like to just kind of educate folks on, you know, that there are being, there are general use pesticides, you know, that aren't like the really, really harmful restricted use pesticides that we're seeing our farmers apply. You know, there's general use pesticides like Roundup that are being used pretty frequently. So we thank you, your time for just like allowing us to just have this educational discussion.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? About the audience? How about from WebEx? So bottom line is that.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Identify yourself.
Hey, good evening. I'm Edmund Lee.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ed, yeah, I, um, maybe I have a combination of questions. Well, first of all, I noticed that you used Roundup as a pesticide, but I thought Roundup is like a herbicide.
Yeah, sorry, we kind of lumped in like herbicide, insecticide as pesticides. Folks who are using Roundup, yes, or treating it like an herbicide, I'm so sorry, that's, that kind of was overlooked on my end. But I know that folks do treat with, you know, I don't have a general like name for like a insecticide that's being used. But no, thank you for that comment. I think that's something that we need to edit on our, on our slides.
Okay, then, uh, I see. Second, perhaps of the third question out of three is, uh, what's the average life cycle of some of these pesticides or even the over-the-counter ones that you can buy in the supermarket, I mean, in the hardware store like Malatiaon? You know, how long will it stay in your environment?
Thank you for that question. I would have to read the specific labels, and these are listed on, you know, I'm not an expert on this, and I'm sorry that I didn't come prepared to answer that question. That is something that I can take back and do more research on and report for next time or share with the board. I don't want to get the wrong information.
Okay, then my last question. Yeah, I guess like you see in my background, I'm doing home improvement, you know, you see the wood studs like that, and you mentioned that this pesticide is in your, in the wood also. So if, if, you know, we're doing work around the house and cutting wood, lumber, and this sawdust that, you know, really breaks, you know, sawdust will break down to fine particles or, you know, you have the leftover sawdust and you just think you just sweep it into the yard, into the grass. Is that an issue also of contaminating my, you know, my own parcel?
Thank you for that question. So that is something that we've been discussing. So it sounds like when these wood treatment companies treat the wood in order for it to be used here and sold here in Hawaii, it's under the impression that it won't seep into the environment that way. But there's research coming out that's saying that neonex are being found in our soil, in our waterways, and it's like, how does that get there? And usually it's through the wood that's being treated or other products that are being treated before they arrive here, which is how they're leaching out into our environment. So that does have the potential. I'd have to find the research to support that, and I can share that with you when we have, we find it.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Those are good questions. Thank you. So any other questions on the board? Audience, WebEx? So bottom line, I could, I could continue using Roundup to kill off my weeds, right?
I would read the label, maybe just.
That doesn't answer my question. Make believe I didn't answer, ask that question. Okay, moving right along, but thank you very much. A big round of applause for Senator. Thank you. Very informative. Thank you. And thanks for coming. And thank the representative, Amy. All right, moving right along. Uh, oh, Ed, you got a full plate. Go ahead. Oh, before Ed gives his report, let me tell you that in October, I've asked the director of the Department of Community Service, says he's the one that handles, they handle, Ed, no, Ed's a deputy of that department, about homeless, et cetera, et cetera. They're gonna move to 222 North School Street, which is, believe it or not, right next to Leo Kalani Gardens, where we have a problem of homeless. So they're gonna be right there monitoring the situation, but he's gonna come and talk to us about what the DCS is all about and what they can do for us. And I think Ed has mentioned a few things that they can do for our community. And with that, your report.
Thank you. So it's actually not my report, it's the mayor's report. Mayor's newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. A few highlights, city makes a major land acquisition right next to the police station on South Parietania Street to support a future expansion of Honolulu Police Department operations. I also have new additions, also in the newsletter, new additions to city's leadership team. The one that everyone's most excited about isn't the new deputy directors or anything like that, it's the new assistant zoo director for the zoo. Also, for any gophers out there, a new solar canopy is being planned for all of my golf course to keep your car cool, but also to up our clubhouse over there. Before I forget on the e-bikes thing, I would recommend HPD has a really good presentation I saw. They were rolling out its schools. They actually had done it for city council as well, just to kind of help inform policy decisions. It's really a new area. It's, it's a tough question to ask, answer. E-bikes are generally rated by class on how fast they can go, but it's hard to tell because you can modify those things. They also sell kits online to modify your, your bikes with. You can also hide the motor and stuff in the frame and other things like that. So it's something that's really hard to enforce, or it's a new area of policy, something that city council is looking at, but if you are interested in more information on that, I would recommend asking HPD to do that, the presentation that I had them, saw them do. Maybe about, maybe earlier this year, I want to say, but I'll see if I can't get them to bring that out. Moving on to my full slate, as you put it. Crosswalk repainting at Niguanu and Beet Street, Beet Street. So as previously explained, previously explained, the city guidelines and the federal guidelines do not support making parking crosswalks across four lanes without any additional safety features or traffic control devices. You know, the cities, the standards that the city is using. You know, the cities, the standards that the city is using, it do drop on traffic data, you know, across the nation and everywhere, basically. And what we're trying not to do is, you know, learn by experience. So, if we can beat that by, you know, adopting these standards, that's what the goal is. And these things do come up quite a bit. If there is an accident, they ask if it's meets city street, city standards or federal standards. And if the answer is no, I think we try and settle as quickly as we can. But, you know, it is, it does pose a big liability issue to us. Now, talking to Leanna in the community here, you know, what we can do is we can have the Department of Transportation Services presented this neighborhood board what they have planned for the intersection. So, you guys can feed back into it and they can gather more information. And you can ask them the hard questions rather than me having to kind of go back and forth, yeah? Make sure you get your questions answered, but you know, so I recommend for that. On the Hala Drive four way stop, they did send a letter to Neighborhood Board fifteen and asked them why would they send it to Neighborhood fifteen when the intersection sits in Neighborhood fourteen? And they said, Edward, I went to the meeting and I know your your neighborhood board is well aware of what's going to happen over there and what they want. And, you know, so that said, they did issue the letter, I have it right here to Neighborhood Board fifteen. And they have issued a paint and sign work order, PSWO, number is three four nine three six to the Department of Facilities Maintenance. And for updates and regarding completion of this PSWO three four nine three six, you can contact DFM at eight oh eight seven six eight three six two two. And they can work with, I can provide you with time updates on where they're at on installing that. There's actually a number of signs indicated on here that identifying the position crosswalks in the area as well as the stop sign that they're going to be installed. So, I can leave my copy, I only have one copy, if anybody's interested, you can give it to Doc over there. Next one I have is trash pickup on Skyline Drive. So, refuse division is going to continue to do manual collection service for that area, then a Skyline Drive. The equipment that I mentioned earlier that they were looking to acquire and possibly service those areas with automated pickup won't work, won't make the turn. So, they're still, they're continuing to evaluate other options and alternative equipment. But we'll let notify, we'll notify residents if they find something and definitely if there's any change before that.
Sort of leave it on or just take it off until you get the information, give us a holler?
Yeah, it'll be manual until we identify some technology. And then, well, in advance of that, they'll, the residents know.
Oh, this is going to be pending. I'll take it off the agenda and you let us know when, you know, what to decide in regards to trash pickup. Is that okay? All right.
Open storm drain at Alani and Alpuni Street, that intersection. So, the DFM response is that it's it's a privately owned drainage catch basin and is required to be maintained by the owner. So, I know council member Fukunaga worked hard to kind of pass language to be able to pave private lanes and everything and that. But this this catch basin kind of services that private lane and explicitly excluded in the revised ordinance of Honeloo Article fourteen dash seventeen. So, it's something that the owners will take care of and the city will reach out them to make sure, you know, they have some timeline to repair that feature. Next, I have orange bedding in Eleven Neighborhood Park. So, the walk wall demolition project hit a stall. They're trying to do the redesign of it. They ran into some issues because of last time it shifted. Then they're currently working through redesign that wall. Right now, design works underway and hope to get it designed finalized by the end of this calendar year and in twenty twenty six. So, until then, basketball court, so should be off limits. I I see how, I see the condition of that orange fencing. I see people playing pickleball on those courts, but it should be off limits on there because it's a safety hazard issue because the rainwater is compromised. Next one I have is the Napoio Park mini park request. So, there was a request to consider playground equipment. And this is the mini park, it's the one with the basketball court, that's a, I guess, half a block up or so from Napoio Park itself. On the mini park thing, parks confirmed, there's no budget right now or consideration to do that, but they did log the request. And they will kind of, they entered into the queue, it's per consideration for playground equipment. But there are several factors we value when determining placement of new apparatus, including funding, site conditions, community need and equity across other neighborhoods. So, we want to make sure that other neighborhoods get access to playground before we, you know, add it to other neighborhoods. So, not sure what that evaluation looks like, but they did put that in the queue. The abandoned vehicles I have in there, I didn't get an update from customer service or from customer service division. Folks that do that were, there's been a change in personnel. So, I didn't get an update for that, but we'll try and get, I'll get a few for September. One last tip I noticed on the border water supply rain barrels, remember Nita? You know, I was at City Mill the other day and I did see a pallet of those rain barrels, plastic wrapped, and it said hold for August thirteenth ad, which is coming up on Wednesday. So, maybe you guys can all get a good deal on it right now. You can get that, it would be eligible for the rebate. I did look at it. Yeah.
Thank you very much. So, shall I leave the reported abandoned vehicle status on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. What else you think I should leave on the agenda, just so I can? I have, the other one is the status of installation of painted crosswalk. That one, you can either have somebody come and answer the question, so we'll give a presentation, let me know.
Okay.
But the others I have already crossed all about, six, because you've done some, you guys have done some.
Yeah, and like I said, if you do want to learn more about e-bikes, you know, go ahead and talk to, I mean, I can probably make that request for HPD to come by. It's a great presentation.
Yeah, good, good job. Questions for the board? Board? Audience? Loi?
Loi, I understand this question might not have an easy answer, but I'm going to ask just for the sake. I think other people out there might be having the same question. I know that the issue with the mayor and the former chief of police is playing out in the public. I understand that the policy is obviously not to comment anything on the lawsuit, but to the extent, I think one of the allegations kind of stood out to me as far as it was alleged that the mayor asked for a certain assistant chief to be fired or, you know, or let go or something like that. But is that a public safety issue that, has that been addressed?
You know, I'm not privy to that information on, you know, what transpired in there policy wise, you know, any or anything around those allegations. So, sorry, I can't, I don't have that information.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Audience? Webex? Thanks, Ed, good job, oh, yeah, full plate. All right, next, District, oh, council member, Cam, office, anybody?
Yes, Chair, Heidi Mirzou for Tyler.
You have two, you have two items on there, you know that, right?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
So, the Judd Street sidewalks, I, the office is looking into that. I don't have an update on that one, but I will get back to you in the next meeting. And then, the status of the vacant Alzheimer's house at Napoio Park? That is, I hate to, I hate to do this, but that would be more the administration side would need to give us an update on that. So, I did talk to council member about it, but he said we had to check in with the administration. So, we'll put in a request for that. And then, let's see, the New Anu Speed Hump has gone in by Craig Side. One update too was the sinkhole. I believe you folks were trying to find out who owned that property. We did find out that the landowner is Bank of Hawaii. And let's see, the other thing I wanted to bring up was that DPP cited an illegal vacation rental operating at seventeen twenty nine Laleha Street, and that just happened, I think, two days ago. So, that's the update. I'm going to put the link to the newsletter in the chat and also a link to the DPP action as well for folks to see.
So, with the council member is going to check up on the status of the old, oh, the vacant Alzheimer's house. And they're going to check with who, Department of Parks? My understanding-
I did talk to council member Rosado Stamm last week Friday, so I didn't, I didn't have much time to put much information together. I can share that the city doesn't have any plans moving forward or any fundings allocated towards, towards any change in there. I did meet a number of great folks in the audience that have a history with it. And maybe you can work on something from there and maybe I might need to get council members help on realizing some of this.
I'm going to, I'm not going to put it on the agenda. If somebody's going to bring it up, we've had a long history and, you know, it's, I think the bottom line is, it's going to be vacant. I don't know what Department of Parks is going to reuse, but we went through this whole exercise. So, unless somebody else brings it up from the board, I'm going to take it off. Okay? Thank you, thank you. Any questions for the council member? Audience? Webex? Thank you. All right, next, Senator Rhodes, all right. Long time no see.
Yeah, I don't think you were here, Chair, the last time I was here, so that's, that's why. Hi, hello everyone. Very quick report tonight. As many, as you may be aware, I'm Chair of the Judiciary Committee in the Senate. And the committee will be holding an informational briefing this Thursday, August fourteenth at ten AM in Conference Room one one six Capitol. Purpose of the briefing is for the committee to receive an update from the Department of Attorney General about litigation where the state of Hawaii is the lead plaintiff or part of a coalition of plaintiffs that filed lawsuits against President Trump and his administration. There's a whole, there's quite a number of, I think, I don't have the exact number, one reason we don't have the briefing, probably fifteen and twenty. A lot of the, a number of actions that the Trump administration have taken are dubious, of doubtful legality, and that's why all the lawsuits, a lot of it has to do with money. Some of them, some of the money that the Trump administration has taken away, of course, what they call the Big Beautiful Bill, which I have a different name for, is, you know, they had the votes to cut Medicaid, which is Medquest for us, you know, you have the vote, you can do what you want. But a number of these other budget cuts for various programs from research to UH to cancer research to school budgets, all across the board. It's very unclear that they have implemented anyway, and that's why the state has sued the other states so many times. Anyway, you're welcome to come in person at one one six. It's an info briefing, info briefings typically do not, we do not take public testimony, which of course is always welcome to contact me or whoever your representative is, so by any concern you have. And then, after a period of relative stability, COVID nineteen activity is on the rise in Hawaii. Fortunately, I got it myself, I avoided getting it for all five years, and then I got it a couple of weeks ago. Testing negative P S. In any case, at the end of June, there were twenty cases of hospitalized COVID patients. Right now, there are seven. The positivity rate I was told today was eighteen percent, which is the highest it's ever been in the state. As you may recall, during the pandemic itself, when it got to about five percent positivity, everything shut down. So, protect yourself accordingly, vaccines are still available. Paxil, if it doesn't work, I can vouch for that. And if you do get COVID, get it soon, you can, because it's more effective sooner you start using it. That's it.
Thank you. I got, I got two real quick questions. First one, COVID vaccine, because of our new Secretary of Health and his, how would you say, his avid position on vaccines, is that really, is it affecting Hawaii? That's the first question. And the second question, I'll give it to you at the same time, is did Trump or the federal government federalize or our National Guard to do any type of work outside of Hawaii?
Okay, so, the first one is not exactly. Vaccines are still available. The CDC, I did believe, changed against the advice or they just not paying any attention to the advice of the scientific board that usually advises about it, has changed who they are suggesting get vaccine. So, now it's like if you're over sixty five, you have some sort of underlying condition, but they said other people don't get it. I think that's nonsense. The other way that it, we're probably going to be hurt is they just recently cut the funding for a whole bunch of messenger ribbit with plague acid vaccines, RNA vaccines. You know, as you can probably tell from my attitude in the last five minutes, I'm not a big fan of the Trump administration. But I have to say, the one thing that I think they deserve a lot of credit for was developing, and the name of the program was Warp Speed. They developed a vaccine that worked and was safe in a very short order and very short order. And now they're taking that victory and just demolishing it. So, no, we think RNA, much of that research has stopped. And I think it's just, it's just one hundred eighty degrees. So, that may, that may hurt us down the road. I don't, I don't, I already forgot your question, I apologize. Oh, National Guard, no, as far, Governor Green said, I, you guys may talk about it when his rep comes up, but he said he would demand a consultation before he authorized guard use here or in another state. But it's not clear to me as a legal matter, there are certain, there are different authorities that can use the National Guard. There's somewhere, it's just a direct order from the president, I don't really know where Governor can stop that. I mean, you know, the president sent National Guard into LA, even though Governor of the state of California, which of course is the biggest and most powerful state government there is, and he did it and they couldn't stop him, and it's being mitigated, speaking of lawsuits, but and their chief division order, it's hard to say.
Only reason I ask that question, being, being a Vietnam veteran, only time the National Guard, I remember, was federalized is because we had a Vietnam War and they pulled everybody to twenty ninth to go over. I don't see that analogy, I mean, similar situation here. But anyway, I started to ask you.
So, that's, yeah, that's my understanding at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions from Senator Rhodes? Yes, yes, come on, Leanna.
Sorry, Carl. This morning, I had a ministry out of public housing. And I did come down more. This morning, I did a little bit of a ministry app at public housing. And I was talking to the maintenance guy, and I don't think he wants to be identified. And I said, hey, how many of these units are still vacant? Ten percent in that building is ready for people to move in, but our state folks have not placed anyone there. And it's ironic, because when I walked in, it says homeless help service directory. Here we have people all over needing shelter and homes, and yet we have an inventory of rooms. There's studio apartments, one bedroom apartments, ready for people to move in, and they have no one yet to assign. And he said that some of them have been vacant for more than a year. Okay, so, my request is that could we have an audit of some sort of all the Hawaii State Housing Authority units? Because people are applying for section eight, you know, they want to get into these units, there's seniors, there's disabled, and yet we have vacancies. My community room where I have bingo is filled with appliances for these new units. The units are vacant. Something's wrong in the system. Senator Rhodes?
Might tell me which, what? Nothing here. Okay.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do, rather than you have, you can do a little research. I'm going to put down under you, your report for next, next week. So, I'm going to put Hawaii State- So I'm gonna put um Hawaii State Housing Vacancies, why?
Is it possible to, we are, we are about to rebuild air rights in a major way.
Okay.
We're coming out of those units, some of them. So it's possible that they're holding those, I don't know that.
Yeah, once you come back with the answer.
Okay.
And Vienna will be here too. Thank you, thank you both of you. Any, oh, by the way, any other questions? Yes.
Hi, I have a concern about um school starting. That um. Some parents know that their kids are not well, but they don't want to stay home. To watch their kids or have somebody to watch them, so they send their sick child to school. And so the other kids get sick, and then they bring it home, the parents. So I have three friends that. Their child went to school and came back home with COVID, so now as parents, they cannot go to work. So I. Don't know what the situation can be. Um, yeah.
That's a good question. Uh, you wanna hold on until next set and find the answer, if there's an answer?
I don't know what to tell you because that, of course, is one of the problems we had with COVID through the whole pandemic was the. Kids, send the kids to school, then they bring it home to everybody, and maybe they survive it just fine, and the older people get sick and living with, so. I don't know of any um. It's just. As I can vouch for, from just having had it, it's been a bad experience.
Yeah, Senator, what do we do this? I'm gonna put this, um, how can we, how can we curtail? Parents from sending six kids to school, something like that, okay? And you can probably check with the D O E. I've heard this before. I gotta go to work. I'm okay, I can't babysit, I'm not gonna hire a babysitter, so I'm gonna send him to school. I think that's, where'd you go? Over there, okay, yeah. Okay, anything else? Good questions, good, good issues. Anybody, anybody? Yes, Lloyd?
Um, maybe Senator Rhodes can help answer since the legal judiciary is your area expertise relating follow-up to, I guess, um, the lady's question. I seem to recall visiting other countries and they have like these infrared cameras just kind of pointing at people, and I guess if people kind of flash red or elevate the temperature, they kind of get called out or screened out. If they implement something like this on public, do you see a legal challenge as far as privacy or?
Yeah, I mean, I remember going into high cable time, they had. Fever cameras, basically, and they're fully over. Registering higher, yeah, there'd be all kinds of challenges to it on five grounds, so. Especially since we're not in the middle of. We're getting a spike over, but it's not, most people have some kind of immunity to sniveling around, they're had it, vaccinated both. And it's just not the same kind of occurrence as we most before, so, because the government's powers of emergency, they can do stuff. Yeah, I think. Which we've got.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board, audience? Webex, thank you, Senator Rhodes.
Thanks very much.
And thanks for coming down. Next, uh, let's see, Senator Kim, office, or is Senator Kim? Hello, Senator Kim? Guess not. Okay, moving on, how about Representative Takanochi?
Hi, uh, Kelton here from the Office of Representative Jenna Takanochi.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just wanted to share that Rep. Takanochi will be hosting office hours in the community again through a series of park talks uh at parks. Other public spaces across District Twenty-seven. These are informal talk stories sessions with Rep. Takanochi and other interested neighbors. Uh, to get feedback on the neighborhood, the twenty twenty-five legislative session, or whatever is on your mind that you'd like to share. Um, the next park talk will take place on Saturday, August thirtieth, uh, from ten AM to eleven thirty AM at New O'Wanu, New O'Wanu Valley Neighborhood Park. Feel free to join me for the entire time or ask your question and go on your way. Uh, I will be posting details, uh, the, the date, time, location to the chat, um, along with uh, uh. A link where you can see any current or upcoming events that the representative will be hosting. Um, and then, uh, we also wanted to share that we, uh, received several reports from multiple residents in the community, uh, who are not able to hear the siren in the Haleiha Heights area. Uh, we have been working with the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, Haima, and we're informed that the current siren at the top of Haleiha Drive has been deemed inoperable. Um, as such, a replacement siren is being constructed uh near eleven neighborhood park, uh, near Iohulena and Lo lena Street. Uh, residents will see work in and around the park area soon, but it should not impact the park usage. The siren is expected to be operational uh within thirty, uh, sixty days, excuse me. Um, we will continue to share updates about the siren. If you're interested in viewing the Haima Public Siren Dashboard, uh, which displays the status of all sirens across Hawaii, uh, I'll post the link to the chat if you're interested. It tells you, you know, if they're operational, if there's expecting maintenance, um, and it's a good first place to check, uh, if you're not aware of where the siren in your vicinity is. Um, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the Representative, uh, Tuckin's office? Okay, give me that date again. When's the, uh, August thirtieth?
August thirtieth, uh, from ten to eleven thirty AM, uh, New O'Wanu Valley Neighborhood Park. I'll post it to the chat, so guys have it.
Yeah, what you can do is ask, just send me or email me the, the schedule, so I'll send it out to the board, and they can disseminate that, okay?
Great.
Be easier. Thank you. Any questions, board, audience? All right, um, let's see, Representative Holt's office. Representative Aikai Kassis's office.
Hi, good evening, Chair. I'm here on the Webex.
Hey, hi, yes.
And I'm sorry, I was there in person earlier, but had to come home to, um, you know, childcare. I actually, if I could, I'd like to address my, my time to a question that was asked just a few minutes ago about what to do about, um. You know, the, the problem of working parents, um, um, sending their kids to school because they have no, uh, no other available childcare to, to take care of their, their kids. And I think that the, the person who posed that question really made a good job, they, they did a good job of, of explaining why we need something like. Uh, paid family medical leave or paid, paid family leave, you know, because there are situations that, that come up, um, invariably where you need to take care of someone that you love. And, um, you know, if, if your job doesn't provide the flexibility that would allow for, for that kind of, of, of care. Having some kind of government program that facilitates that, that care to happen is really important, so I think that's. Uh, I appreciate whoever it was who, who raised that, that question, because that's one of the issues that we, we are contemplating at the legislature. And it is a time of year, you know, it's August, the legislative session's gonna start in, in, in January, so we're. In the time of the year where we're starting to think about what kind of issues, um, we should be addressing the legislature too, um, in, in the new session. So I would love to hear any feedback from, from the board or from, from folks in the audience about, um, you know, top of mind concerns. I know that I share the concerns that I think that a lot of you have about the, the changes that are happening in Washington DC. And the, the impacts that, that those changes are gonna have, um, here in Hawaii. Um, so tho- those are the, the things that I'm thinking about a lot, um, but I'd love to hear any, any ideas and suggestions that arise from, from the board or from the audience. And with that, open to any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing it up. Actually, what you're, you're referring to is the uh, uh, Family Medical Leave Act. Which the title's a, an employee, uh, actually, three months if it deals with it for the family. But of course, they gotta work for a thousand two hundred fifty hours and being there, employed by one year. Is that the one you're talking about? That's.
You know, there's, there is that, yeah, there is the national, um.
Yeah, that is.
Statue that you're referring to, and I think what we need to look at is what are the, um, you know, do we need to develop a, a state level program? Provide that kind of benefit for private citizens.
Yeah, I think, I think that what the question is, I think, coming from, uh, uh, the resident is that, yeah, we know we have a legal right to do that. But what if somebody says, I don't want to take that medical, uh, medical, family medical leave and, you know, expire that? I want to just, yeah, whether to just send my kid to, to school. I don't want to, you know. That's, I think, the question, even though you may have a legal remedy, the question is, what if, how do you prevent? Arab of sitting a sick kid with COVID?
Sure.
You know, to school.
I think it's really interesting question, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to comment, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, it, it's a little different situation. Family medical leave is more continuous care for a longer period of time. This is more episodic when it's, you know, nobody can stay home with the kids necessarily, you know, on that day, and they don't know it's coming. And it's a shorter period of time, so it's a different set of, of needs. And looking at someplace, some, you know, some way, some way to get, um, care on an emergency basis.
I, I agree with Cora because to apply that, you gotta have, uh, pre, pre-authority to do it. I mean, if my kid's sick, no, I'm not gonna go out. And get the authority, I don't know, make a decision. Anyway, uh, I think that's something you guys can talk with, talk with the D O E can talk with.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Any que- any more questions? Thank you very much. All right.
Oh, sorry, Chair Fong, just letting you know, it's twenty more minutes for the meeting. It's almost nine o'clock. Just the time.
We gotta leave here by nine?
Yeah.
The nerve. All right, um, let's move on then. Thank you. Uh, Governor's rep?
Aloha, Chair. How's it going?
All right, nice seeing you, yes.
Yes, how are you all doing? Okay, I'll make this quick. So, uh, busy summer, and yes, time is moving so fast, legislative session, twenty twenty-six is just around the corner, but with that said, it's been a pretty busy summer. With three hundred and thirteen bills, three one three, signed into law to protect and improve community well-being. Um, the Office of the Governor hosted thirteen different bills signing ceremonies, really emphasizing on community voices and legislative, legislative priorities such as climate action. Wildfire preparedness, affordable housing, healthcare, and just really taking care of our most vulnerable populations with a lot of changes this year, so that really. Expands to, uh, the wildfire support and fire safety as we just came across the. Uh, second year anniversary since that tragedy, uh, to aid Maui after recent wildfires, Governor Green did sign legisla- legislation. Allocating over eight hundred and seven million to support wildfire settlement claims. Additionally, the Office of the State Fire Marshal was transferred to the Department of Law Enforcement to enhance fire prevention. And emergency response strategies across the state as we've been seeing a lot of different watches and warning with our weather system. I also just want to touch on, um, school, school meal expansion since the first day of school was just recently, and we're starting to see a lot of the kids going back to school. Governor Green did sign legislation to expand free school meal access for students eligible for reduced price meals, starting in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. So this program will further extend to include students from families earning up to three hundred percent of the federal poverty, poverty level. By twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, supported by over three point three million in funding. And if you want more details about what has been covered this summer as we get into the fall season, you could visit our website at governor.hawaii.gov/newsletter. And that concludes my report. Thank you all so much. Hope you all are staying safe. We definitely are seeing a surge in the COVID cases, so take care of yourselves.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Dallas. One question, uh, Mike, I was reading that Ashley's, the Lieutenant Governor is pushing a pre, uh. What's it called? Preschool, that, that, um. What do you call that? Before kindergarten? Yeah, that program. Is that in effect now? Free, what?
You know, I, I want to say yes.
Preschool, yeah.
Yeah, early education, yeah, that, that's, that's definitely her lane. I know she just had a. Um, a press conference and an opening, uh, a couple of weeks ago. But I'll put it in the chat.
That's in effect then. Oh, good. All right, I just read about it. Questions, any questions for the board? Audience?
It was ready.
Very much. Oh, yes, Alika?
Yeah, so just one question. So the early program, is it for all elementary schools from, uh, since it went into effect?
Yes. Okay, good. Thank you.
What was the answer? Yes, okay, yes. Okay, any other questions? Good question. Okay, moving right along, let's see. Oh, approval of minutes, April fourteenth. Any corrections on the minutes of April fourteenth? If not, an internal motion that we approve the minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm not gonna do a roll call, and if you could raise your right hand. Right hand. Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is, I'm gonna ask, Vern, all right. Yes, you got it. I'm, thank you for, thank you for, uh.
I have a one year, uh, one month old, so I cannot take a chance with, uh, inoculated, uh, Mike. Um, hi, you guys know me, my name is Vernon Nakamura. Um, everybody loves Christmas, everybody loves the parades, everybody loves a Christmas parade. Okay, I'm here again this year. Um, the Christmas parade for the Liliha Palama Christmas Parade is scheduled for November twenty-eighth. As required by the city permitting for parades, we need community input. So I'm here again, asking for community input, and I appreciate if the board would endorse again the parade. Um, so I'm just giving notice and, uh, Chairman, I'd like to be on the September meeting agenda. So that I can receive any input, so I can present that to the city parade permitting process. Again, thank you. I want to turn it over to our. Club president.
Bodyguard.
Erwin Santos, and he's gonna talk about some of our fundraising requirements. Thank you.
All right, my name is Erwin Santos, and I'm the president of the Kameha Meha Lions Club. And, uh, you know, inside our organization, a bunch of volunteers, of the world's largest volunteer service organization. Uh, we have a few members, your recently elected secretary, Chance, is the president of the Hawaii. Cyber Lions Club, Donna Ricardo is also a Lions Club member, and, and there may be a few others that I haven't addressed, but. We work on volunteer time. For the projects that we have with this Liliha Palama Christmas Parade, you know, we volunteer, uh, to set up. Uh, and organize, be present at meetings, and make the show work. This year, we took on the responsibility, the financial responsibility of supporting the parade, and for previous years, that was done under the, the Liliha Palama Merchant. Uh, Association, they no longer are doing that. So as a club that's been participating in decades. We are gonna do that, but it's a financial obligation, and for us volunteers, some of us donate. But some of us, a lot of us, reach out to the community for outright donations or even fundraisers. So, um, if members of Webex and if you folks over here can visit our website, klcfoundation.org. We accept donations. It's gonna take about four grand to pull off this parade every year. It takes cost for the candies we have to buy. The trolley and some, a lot of the logistics services. So in addition to outright asking for donations, we also have fundraisers on September twelfth. At Not Sunoya Tea House, we have a fundraiser, tickets are sixty-five bucks each. Um, it's gonna be a great dinner on Friday evening, and we hope you folks to contribute and help us out. Um, again, visit us at klcfoundation.org, um, make a donation. or buy some tickets to help us support our cause. Thank you very much.
Any questions? First of all, I wanna congratulate you and thank you for all you guys do. A very worthwhile organization. And my question is, if we wanna donate, uh, can you give that information to Vern? Vern can email, or you can give it to me directly and I'll, I'll disseminate it. And then we can know if we wanna make a donation, where to send it. Is that okay? Oh, you have a, you're gonna have a? Okay, uh, next, next meeting. All right, I won't make it a condition upon my sitting on one of your corvettes again, okay?
Oh, uh, we'll, we'll get the handle for you.
I wanna thank you. That was after how about 10 years, I think? Thank you. I, I'm not as pretty as a queen, but one of the queens didn't show up.
Can get you a stash too.
Yeah, okay.
Chair Wesley, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Everybody, thank you very much.
All right, big round of applause for Lions Club. All right, thanks. All right, moving right along real quickly now. The next one on the agenda is a good governance reform resolution. I don't know if you, I don't think we have enough time to discuss it. So if it's, if it's okay with every? Oh, yeah, you can present it. Definitely, definitely. Yeah, you want us to give a brief what it is that we can look at? Yeah, go ahead. Interfere yourself, please.
Thank you. Aloha, everybody. I have copies over here too, if the public wants to review it. My name is Aria Juliet Castillo. I'm a representative from HAPA, Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. We are circulating this good governance resolution in, um, cooperation with Common Cause Hawaii, uh, our Hawaii Clean Elections Coalition, the League of Women Voters, ACLU Hawaii. Uh, this resolution just asks the state legislatures to make some co- like good, common sense, good governance rules changes to make the process more accountable, um, more accessible to us and more fair for all of lawmakers involved. Um, I just really briefly have a presentation that I'll go through that talks about the different topics that we have covered in the resolution. Um, so this resolution talks about the rules that affect the state legislature. So they, the process about how they take testimony, how they decide what bills are heard, um, where the bills are heard in what committees, um, what, uh, sorry, what, uh, cosponsorship. So if you could, uh, move forward on the slides pretty quickly. So this just kind of identifies the problem. I think we have all heard about the corruption scandals that have happened the past couple of years at the state legislature. Um, I, many advocates have had problems, um, trying to get their bills passed or not getting their bills heard or passed through different committees. So this is a systemic problem that's happening. Can move on to the next slide. Um, and then again. So basically the topics are timely public access to testimony, asking that testimony is required to be released 22 hours before a hearing. Um, asking the committee votes on all bills. So right now it's up to the purview of the chair to decide which bills are actually put up for discussion and which bills are vetoed. And the committee really doesn't have a say in what those bills are have. Majority of the bills that are heard are by the committee chairs itself. Um, bills that are not written by the, um, by not written by committee people, committee chairs are not, are less likely to be heard. And then also bills, uh, introduced by freshman lawmakers and Republican lawmakers are three times less likely to be heard in committee, and that's just all because of the decision of the chair. So it's asking that the committee as a whole decides on what bills are gonna hear. Um, drifting the referrals of non-fiscal bills out of money committee. So this is policy bills that are getting funneled into the money committee. The money committee gets, uh, over 53% of the bills that are referred to money committee never get heard. So they have a, just a huge backlog of all of these bills and it gives the finance chair a lot of power. Luckily, we have a new finance chair this year that has committed to stopping this practice of having non-fiscal bills funneled through money committee. However, we would like that to be subset in policy rather just, um, that they promise that they're gonna do it. Um, encouraging majority cosponsorship. So instead of having five bills with three different lawmakers signed on to each one about, um, for example, term limits, we have one solid bill that has the majority support. Eighteen lawmakers sign on and encourage that one to be moved forward. So we don't have to pick and choose. And it encourages collaboration. The last one would be have written amendments required. So if there is amendment written in the committee hearing, it has to be in a writing so the public can see it before it gets voted on. Next slide, please. And then statutory amendments. This is encouraging laws to be passed, so prohibiting campaign contributions from state contractors. This bill made it all the way into the last, uh, week of the legislature, but got killed by leadership. A comprehensive public financing options provides funds for campaigns without relying on private corporate donations. Um, prohibiting laundering campaign contributions. This presents circumvention of contrain- contribution limits, um, disencouraging leadership of lawmakers to, um, to pick and choose exactly who they want to be elected in the next election cycle. And then, um, add term limits as a constitutional amendment, just allowing the public to vote on if they wanna have term limits, uh, for the state lawmakers. Move on. So just, we're trying to pass transparency, efficiency, fairness and accountability. Passing this resolution, we've passed it in 12 neighborhood boards in the last year. Um, we did have a, um, a stipulation on there in the last resolution that we passed that asked that all bills introduced by request cannot be anonymous anymore. You have to disclose who made the introduction. And that rule actually got put into writing for the House this past year. So that was a huge win for us. Um, and passing this resolution just supports the good work of Senator Rhodes, who's done a lot for, um, campaign finance reform and blocking, um, campaign contributions from state contractors as well as Rep. Hasi and just helps support the work that they're doing, um, and holds your reps accountable to making these positive changes. That's all. I'm here for questions. I can talk after the meeting too.
Okay, well, thank you for that real rapid, uh, presentation. You know what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask the board, because we don't have time to digest it, take it home, digest it. You got the general, um, gist of it. Yeah, and I can appreciate what you're doing with, I'm the chair of the State Ethics Commission, so some of these issues are definitely we've gone over. So I'm gonna ask the board, unless you really wanna do it tonight, we can't because we gotta leave here by 9 o'clock. Read it, digest it. Any questions? We'll take it. I'll leave it on their new business for next m- meeting. Come back. And if any questions, then we'll see what board wants to do in regards to any action. Any questions before she leave? Board? Thank you. Audience? Thank you. A big round of applause. Thank you. All right. Yeah, good legislation. All right. Uh, we'll see what happens next. Uh, let's see. Oh, Malahia. St. Francis? No Launa Keela, I know. There wasn't. Friends at the library? Any nonprofit organizations? Okay, let's go to announcements. Monday, September 8th, same time, same station here. And, uh, we have a short announcement by Chance for, go ahead.
On October 18th. Um, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Representative Takanochi, uh, put together a community resource fair at Pukine Hospital. Um, so we figured we'd give you guys a early heads up and we'd hope to see you out there. Um, I said maybe we're at Board 14 will be one of the booths over there and including other community partners. Thank you.
Uh, so far we have five from the board, so anybody else interested, please email me. I'll send it out again if you're interested. No, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna have Chance send it out again and see if we have anybody else that's interested in joining. It's a good, it's a good project. It's a resource fair. Basically, we show and tell. And maybe Lloyd can get something that we can give him free. Yeah, yeah, so while you can ask her later. I hate to buy something, but, you know, I'm sure that they may have something we can give her. All right, uh, anything else? Any other announcements? Not pretty close. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Moved by Chance, seconded by, ladies first, Christie. The second by Christie. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Any oppose? Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening and to the audience, those of you who can come, thank you very much for coming. All right, meeting adjourned.